All right, the meeting, the school board meeting is now back in session. Thank you so much to the community for waiting. Those who are here live or watching streaming live. We had some technology issues that we were navigating, but we're ready to go forward. And thanks to the technology crew in the back who are making that possible. We appreciate you being here. So next on our agenda is the five-year strategic communication plan update. Thank you, Kelly Lozey, for being here and turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So this is an exciting moment. So two years ago, I was here in front of the school board talking about doing a communications audit. This time, I'm here talking about having completed our communications audit and having taken that information. And now talking to you about the five-year strategic communications plan that I've built with the information that we gathered during that communications audit. So Kim, if you could pull up slides. And I'll just do a little bit of a quick walkthrough because you have the plan in your packet. And just remind some folks about some of the details of the audit as well. We actually have three board members that weren't here and weren't board members when we did the audit. So I want to make sure I give just a little bit of an overview of some of the details of that. Perfect, so you can go ahead. So just a reminder, some of the components of our communications audit. So we did this back in October of 2022. We did a survey of staff and families and community members. And that included some information on communication preferences, perceptions, ideas. The auditor also did a materials review. So this included district publications, policies, website, social media, our existing strategic plan, our budgets. And then we also did focus groups. So board members participated in focus groups. Our communication staff participated in focus groups. Families, again, staff, all of these components. And then this included kind of gathering some information on strengths, improvements, kind of decisions, being able to provide input on those decisions and then kind of timeliness and information needs. And even though I didn't list it up here, the important thing to remember is that at the same time, the board was doing their strategic planning process. And so we were able to take some of that information because it kind of involved communications and engagement and kind of line that up next to the information from our audit and utilize that information as well to be kind of thinking about how we might put together a strategic communications plan for the district. So this is an example of some of the kind of pieces that we put together when we talked about the strengths and challenges. So comprehensively, this looked at a lot of different things. So it looked at district image. It looked at communication specifically. So for example, you know, parents gave communications during a crisis or serious incident a high rating in terms of how informed they feel, which is positive. But then we also got some feedback that communications were a little more kind of reactive versus proactive. And that the stories about the really great things happening in our district were not quite getting out. So people didn't quite feel informed about the really positive things that were happening on a regular basis, which from a storytelling perspective and from kind of a public education storytelling perspective isn't great. So we want to make sure that information is getting out. Go ahead. And then we also had some information come back about our internal communications, our external communications, our website, and then our social media. So, you know, things like delays in receiving important information, our families in particular. We know we got a lot of feedback that they had quite a bit of communication that they were waiting through, that they were very confused about all the different places that they were receiving communications from and then not quite understanding parent square. And that's understandable. We rolled out parent square really in the middle of COVID-19 because we needed to. And so we didn't have the opportunity to share as much information as we had hoped to about parent square and the purpose. And then our website being text-heavy, not quite having as many photos or that storytelling being hard to navigate. And then our social media, again, not using that as a great opportunity to share some of those stories. And then importantly, you know, allowing comments on our social media, but then not having an opportunity to engage with commenters on our social media. And we know social media is a two-way communication tool. So that's another missed opportunity to engage with those audiences. So now I'll kind of walk through a couple of the pieces that are in the strategic communications plans. So one of the first things that I put together was a goal for our plan. And so our goal is to ensure staff, families, students, and community members have access to and are well-informed about key district information. So we're really committed to delivering effective communications that support our district's strategic communication goals and priorities, that foster transparency and promote two-way communication and engagement. So that was really based on the feedback that we received, that that two-way piece is really important. It's important to share information out, but it's also important to have that two-way communication. It was also really important that those strategies be aligned so that we were thinking about, in particular, the board goals and how are we supporting the work of the board and championing those messages? And then thinking about the objectives that we wanted to achieve over this kind of five-year period of time. And so that's really hard to narrow down to just a few things. So being able to think about the highest priorities right now for us. And so to me, one of the really important pieces was improving accessibility and transparency of our information, being able to do better storytelling, so developing engaging, compelling, diverse stories, and being able to do those in multimedia formats. So not just one, one way of telling stories, but how are we doing lots of different ways of telling our story? And being able to do that in a way that we're showcasing the district's priorities. And then being able to foster engagement through kind of refined communication channels. So we know that we have some channels right now that are really effective. We know we probably aren't using some channels that we have to the best of our ability. And we also know that we want to be able to explore what it looks like to use other communication channels that we aren't already using. So those three pieces felt like kind of the biggest priorities and the things that we would want to focus the most on kind of over the five years. And so to me, this was the first spot that we really have this high-level alignment. So looking at our key messages. And so these should look fairly familiar to you all. These are pretty lined up with our board's priorities and goals. So the Corvallis School District provides students with challenging, relevant, and engaging learning experiences that help them succeed and prepare them for the future. So that's our key message number one. We celebrate the rich diversity of our school community and we ensure the needs and interests of all students are taken into account. And we aim to ensure success by inspiring and empowering our students to thrive in a diverse and ever-changing world. And we believe in prioritizing social, emotional, mental, and physical wellness to create a thriving school community. Through this, we foster growth and community care, ensuring every student feels known, valued, and empowered to reach their full potential. So this is the first opportunity that I've had with our communications work to start with something and build in strategies and stories and thoughts based on something like this. And that's actually been a really exciting opportunity to walk into storytelling with because in all honesty, it's been really easy to start to hang things on these because this is such a core of the work that's happening in our district. And it's really great to be able to do the storytelling through this lens and be able to know that it's so easy to tie back to the core work of our district. So there's some really exciting opportunities, I think, in having these key messages and having it aligned with the work of the board and knowing that each of our departments is also working on messaging and things around these key priorities. I think it's just a really exciting opportunity. And so you'll notice throughout the plan, there's also strategies and tactics across all of those different objectives. There are several things across the entire kind of five years. You'll also notice there's some things that have already been started. It is a 2023-2028 strategic plan, so some of the work has already begun. And so under each of these, I tried to build things that could start now. Like we'll see, one of the strategies right there is talking about, you know, creating a strategic communications plan. That's one of the first priorities. And so thinking about things that we could build over time, thinking about things that were incredibly foundational. Messaging and information is fantastic, but if we don't have the right tools and the right ways and the right access to that information for people, the actual information doesn't matter. So for me, it was thinking about the importance of both of those pieces and building that out over time. And also thinking about ways to leverage our staff because they gave us a lot of feedback about how, how much they wanted to be really, really positive ambassadors for our district and just didn't feel like they had the right pieces to do that. And so I think a lot of the pieces that we've included in here will give us the opportunity to give them the tools to be able to do that in a lot better way and the support and the training and all of the things that they have said that they want so that they can help us be part of this messaging. And so we tried to build that out over this timeframe and also to help set us up that at some point, a while from now, hopefully, we'll be building out more strategic communications plans and that these pieces will set us up to be able to do that in a positive way. And you'll also notice another big key component in here is that we built in measurement evaluation and then a calendar of when we're planning to do these activities. And so equally important was thinking about checking off items as we go. So part of the success of the plan is being able to execute the items that are in it, but also of success is being able to measure the effectiveness of these items. So the good news is because we were able to do the communications audit and a clear component of that was asking people, you know, how informed they felt about certain topics. We already have kind of baseline data to tell us where people were. And so our plan is that partway through executing this plan, we will go back and ask those questions again. So we already have some built-in tools to be able to go back and assess if we've made progress in some of those areas. And we also have the ability to see if we've been able to get some reach with some of our strategies. And so, you know, as much as I have finalized the plan and it's here in its print form, you know, this is a living document and we will continue to evaluate and adjust and adjust timelines as needed because the feedback that we get as we start to do this process will be really important and we want to be responsive to what we hear from folks. So if we do the things that we thought we heard and we get more feedback that says we have missed a mark or that we haven't included something that is really crucial, then we want to be responsive to that. So it's a living document. We will continue to update it. And so having these pieces in place in there will be incredibly important. And I think it speaks to that accountability part that we've talked about tonight of being accountable to the data that we collected, being accountable to the feedback that we collected and coming back and being able to make those changes and pivots. And so the next steps are to, like I said, measure the plan's effectiveness and then the actual impact of those strategies on families, students, community, and the staff. Being able to share yearly progress with everyone. So this is the first step of me being able to come to you all and share that the plan is complete, that I will be coming and doing a yearly kind of update with you all on how the progress of this plan goes. And what we find is we kind of do some of that early assessment work. And then I will plan to be doing that with the community as well. And then, like I said, making ongoing adjustments as needed and being responsive to that feedback. To me, the biggest commitment that comes out of this is that like commitment to this constant feedback loop of we're going to get feedback, we're going to adjust, we're going to be responsive to that feedback, and we will continue to do so with this process because that's what we said we would do. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Sammy?
First of all, a deep appreciation of this thorough explanation of the work that you engaged in and led and, and the product that we have and the plan ahead. Thank you. It's phenomenal and I'm really grateful reflecting on where we started and where we are. There is so many objectives here and strategies and tactics that are clear to prioritize the work. I want to acknowledge it and appreciate the work there. I'm going to pick one and anchor on one. Strategy three, tactic two. Under develop, refine, and streamline communication tools and channels to keep a key audience informed and engaged. One of the things that you're going to be focusing on or working on is creating communication plan templates for emergencies. I believe that's the only place where I can see a specific mention of, you know, crisis management, communication, and response. And I think that's a really important point. I want you to maybe expand where in the strategies or maybe somewhere else outside the communication plan, there might be other elements where communication work informs planning, practicing, training, and even receiving feedback on how resilient we are, how we learn after an emergency or crisis, and how we're preparing for one. I believe this tactic is very crucial, specific, but I'm wondering about other elements if you can highlight those.
Yeah, and that's a great point that there is definitely departmental work that isn't captured necessarily in the plan because we do participate in incident command system process. Our communications, I say department, it's me. Our communications department is involved in that process. We have communication plans, strategy, all kinds of things. Melissa knows she is heavily involved in this as well, that we do anytime that there is a crisis. And so I think, based on your question too, I think, you know, what are the things that we capture here? What are the things that we capture in some other way? And how do we assess that feedback? Because you're right, it's important for the community to know that we're doing that work and that there is all of this planning happening and all of this process happening kind of behind the scenes. But we don't necessarily have that documented in a real thoughtful, strategic way. So that might just be a spot to make a quick addition, a addendum already to the plan, and that's okay. That's a good piece of feedback, Sammy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a question from Lou online. Lou?
Yeah, first, like Sammy said, this is, I really appreciate all the work that went into this and also all the engagement from the community and staff and everybody. I noticed when you had the, some of the feedback was given about not seeing the learning, the commitment to learning or quality of learning. And I noticed in objective two, under strategy one and two, I didn't see anything about storytelling related to student academic achievement specifically. And that might help address that because there might be misconceptions in the community for not having some of those stories out there. So with the graduation rate where it's at and even some of the success stories of students with their math and with the AP classes and college credits that they're getting, I think those are some great opportunities to kind of incorporate some of the tactics you have there. And so I was curious if there's a plan to focus some of those tactics with overlaps in the academic achievement realm based on that feedback that there is, there's some hesitancy around if that's happening in our district. So hopefully that made sense.
Thanks for your question, Lou. Absolutely, it made sense. And actually, that's already a question I fielded today from somebody, which gave me a great opportunity to think about. I think there was just maybe not as much clarity in some of the pieces, but I was thinking already about kind of talking about that and speaking about the strategies around the stories in the newsletter and thinking about the ways in which we're talking about kind of the learning in action and some of the things that are happening and those being some direct strategies to talk about kind of the academic rigor and more specifically, the ways that we're showcasing not only the things that students are learning in the classroom, but the ways in which they're being asked to do problem-solving and critical thinking and all of those deeper strategies. So yes, I think that it might just be helpful to use a little more descriptive language in here to kind of talk about tying that back to some of those pieces that came up. But absolutely, that's definitely a focus of some of the tactics and strategies in the plan because I think a lot of that work is happening and it's our job to do a really good job storytelling. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's awesome to hear. And it's good for the community to hear that too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Chris?
First of all, thank you. Your work is always so well organized and very thorough. And I appreciate reading all of this. As I was reading this report, I kept thinking, who is this? Is this just Kelly that does all the communication? I mean, I know we lost some of your team. And is it just you?
The communications department is me, yes. What I would say is an important piece of some of this work and I think an important piece of thinking about how to be more strategic is to pull pieces of this work cross-departments and to be thinking about the roles that other people besides just me play in helping us be better communicators. So will I be probably a primary executor of core components of this work? Yes. Will there be roles that Ryan and Melissa and Amy and Kim and other people in this room will play? Absolutely, because I think that's how we will actually do a better job is that it doesn't just rely on me and I say my department, which is me, but it will rely on all of our staff and it will rely on our staff that are in our buildings who actually are already core communicators for our district and maybe wouldn't self-identify in that exact way. But I certainly think of them as an extension of my department because they're all ambassadors for our district, so.
Yeah, and I really do appreciate that. And I, yeah, I think you need to give yourself credit for all the work that you do and everywhere you go to and all the, I mean, it's not just being where things are happening, but it takes time to write and edit and all of that. And so when I was reading this report, I wanted to see your name. Like I want Kelly to get credit for this because it's a lot of work and you do do a lot. And so, and I think it's important for our teachers and our staff to know how much work you do. So I just put your name on this because you deserve it. And the other thing is, I wonder about-
Chris, do you mind if I pause for a moment and ask for some more time for us? Given that we've gone over time? Can we add, with the board's consent, five minutes to our discussion?
Thanks. I'll be really quick. I wonder how we can empower our students to be part of the communication too because they love to tell stories and they can also be ones that share more about what's going on in their house, right, in their school houses.
Yeah. I think one of the hardest things, and Ryan knows this all too well, is there are 50 things I could have put in here that Ryan would have said, there's no way you can do those other 50 things. And one of the strategies that I really would like to dip into, and even if it's not now, I'd like to build towards it, is how to pull students into some of this work a lot more strategically. Other districts do really cool work where students do social media takeovers and all kinds of really cool stuff. And, you know, speaking of that, Kelly, are you doing all this thing? I'm like, why would I, why would I try and grab that right now? But it's such cool work. And so I love the idea of doing those pieces and I want to build towards doing some of that. And my hope is that as we can strategically get some of this work happening more effectively and get staff feeling more supported in the other pieces, I think it will help me be in a place to be able to do kind of some more kind of planning and thought like that. And I would love to do some stuff with students a lot more. I love doing it. Thank you.
It takes time.
It does take time and I want to do it well. So I don't want to just do it just to do it. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for sharing this report, but not just sharing the report, all of the thoughtful work that has gone into developing this plan. I really appreciate the alignment also with thinking about board goals. As you're going through alignment, that's been a theme that we've been hearing throughout, which is really rewarding to hear as a board because, or as an individual on the board because of the, the hope that those goals came from the community. And so to see that reflected back in terms of the work that's happening. But thank you so much. As a parent too, it's been really just a pleasure to see some of the new communications come out. I've really enjoyed reading them and being able to see the ways that students and educators and what's happening in schools is being highlighted from a very, just a celebratory stance of recognizing all of that incredible work that's happening with such care and storytelling. So thank you for all that you're doing to expand the ways that we are connecting with families, connecting with educators, connecting students, and really telling the story of the district.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have a lot tonight and we have a lot of shifting between topics. And so I think that's a mental load, both for those engaging, watching, watching along with us and those who are here. So if you need a moment to take a breath, collect your thoughts. We are moving into the Oregon School Boards Association 2024 election. And we have both two positions to vote on as well as three resolutions. So the board will now vote on each OSBA position and resolution. The board secretary will submit the official vote to OSBA on behalf of the board tomorrow, December 13th. Is there any discussion? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair?
Oh, I should probably state first that our first vote is on the Board of Directors, position 10. So does anyone wish to make a motion related to that specific vote?
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Sammy?
I move to vote for Luhui White Bear for position number 10 on the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay, it has been motioned by Sammy and seconded by Chris to vote for Dr. Luhui White Bear as the, for position number 10 on the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors. All right, we'll take a vote and, oh, discussion, thank you. Any discussion? Sammy?
I told Dr. Luhui White Bear, I might speak to this motion long enough. It will take two-thirds majority of the bar to end debate, but I'm not going to go that long. I want to say Dr. Luhui White Bear is a phenomenal leader. I'm excited to vote for her and this motion, and vote for this motion for her leadership, not only because she have shown her leadership within this organization as our chair and colleague across the region that she's going to represent Benton Lincoln. She showed up to districts, she engaged with community members, and she have a history of engaging with community members and partners across- and she have history of engaging with community members and partners across the state. Uh I really uh think this uh position is going to be very important for Oregon School Board Association. Uh traditionally, uh presidents had not leaned in on one position or the other, but I had to uh say this loud and clear to my colleagues in the region that Dr. Luhui White Bear uh is that candidate to support, to represent this region, all of it, not only Corvallis. And with these words, I want to share my enthusiasm for supporting her and I want to encourage my colleagues to do the same. And I believe if this vote prevails, uh that will uh make sure, depending on the votes uh from other districts, that she would be our next representative. So every vote matters and the votes of this district absolutely matter on this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, and then we'll all call for a vote. Uh Chris?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the motion passes. All right. Congratulations on moving forward with the the vote from our board. All right, our next vote is on the Legislative Policy Committee, position number ten. Any discussion? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, Lou?
Um I move to vote for Soren Rounds for position number ten on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. Um, yes.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
So it has been motion moved by Lou and seconded by Chris to vote for, and I'm sorry, I don't have the. Soren Rounds for position number ten on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee. Is there any further discussion? Lou?
Um I just wanted to share with my colleagues on the board that my um interactions with Soren um at both the conference and also at our regional meetings have um really spoken to his um commitment to representing the region and being involved with legislative action. Um he actually um volunteered um just as a candidate. I know he was invited to, but he could have said no, but he volunteered to help plan the regional meeting I spoke about earlier um along with myself and our colleague from Lebanon, um Clyde Rude, who is also running for a position. But um I think that says a lot if somebody is running for something and doesn't already serve in a capacity to want to help organize um legislative priorities for a region. Um so that is something I would share with the board in consideration of your vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll move to vote. Chris?
For Soren.
For Soren Rounds.
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
I vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And now we move on to resolution number one, which amends the OSBA due schedule. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay, Lou?
I move to adopt a resolution number one, amend the Oregon School Boards Association's due schedule.
I second.
It has been moved by Lou and seconded by Bernie to adopt resolution number one, amend the Oregon School Boards Association due schedule. Is there any further discussion? Sammy?
Just want to speak to this motion. Uh thank you for uh moving to adopt uh the due schedule. Uh this is a really important decision that has not been made for more than twenty-five years. The last time the due schedule was altered was nineteen ninety-eight. And uh we all know nothing costs the same since nineteen ninety-eight, except hot dogs from Costco uh and the dues from OSBA. Uh the point is really to maintain the level of services and supports that OSBA provides. Uh OSBA engaged in community engagement with all stakeholders, uh school boards and school board member superintendents to understand the priorities of services and benefits and how can we balance the budget. So the help and supports that I got twenty seventeen that we get this year uh continues to be provided for uh school boards uh for years to come. So for for that reason, I believe uh that this due schedule will help us sustain the organization uh for years to come in a responsible manner. And for that, I encourage a vote yes on it.
Any further discussion? Lou?
Um thanks, Shauna. I was um just going to also add in that I really appreciate how much um OSBA staff provides for us that um our district doesn't end up having to do. And especially um because everybody knows how much I like policy. And um they actually help us stay in compliance with policy changes, law changes, and those updates. Um and that would, I know Melissa goes in and adds um to our policies and everything. And she would have to do even more work without that support um on top of what she already does. And I think that is such a huge benefit, along with all kinds of other um things that we have um as being part of OSBA. Um so I feel like if the dues haven't been raised for that long, I know it's sounds like a lot of money, um especially given our budgetary um situations throughout the state. Um but that's included among the reasons why we just need to keep advocating for appropriate funding so we're able to do things like this, to continue to get the support with trainings and policies and um all the other stuff that we get for them. So um that's what I would share with our my fellow colleagues in consideration of your vote.
Thank you, Lou. And I'll just add appreciation for the work that I've seen OSBA do in support of boards, not just our own, but those around the state in terms of that professional development for school board members who are volunteers. And I think our our board is very rich with board members who have a lot of educational experience and background. And we know that that's, we all have room to grow continually. And we know that's not always the case in communities as well and not always the case on our board here either. And so knowing that there is that support, which also takes a capacity lift off the district to have to provide that type of support, um just the tremendous value that that partnership and relationship brings. So it has been, I'm getting better at this, moved by Lou and seconded by Bernie to adopt resolution number one to amend the Oregon School Boards Association due schedule. Let's move to vote. Chris?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the motion passes unanimously. Two more. Our next resolution, resolution two, creates the Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus and designates a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Chris?
I'm moved to adopt resolution number two, amend the Oregon School Boards Association bylaws relating to composition of the Board of Directors.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
It has been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie to adopt resolution number two to amend Oregon School Boards Association's bylaws relating to composition of the Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? Sammy?
Uh briefly, I want to acknowledge the work that members of the Advisory Committee of OSBA's Board and LGBTQ two IA plus uh two SI uh A plus who have helped inform uh the need for further support for school board members, administrators, educators, and students uh from the Pride community. And the caucus is a path to accomplish uh the goals and the priorities that uh they have highlighted in order to improve the student outcomes for all and with specific understanding of the unique needs of the students and the members and educators who support them personally. And I know uh Luhui and Shauna are members of the Color Caucus and we have found great value of it, and also Bernie, sorry. Um uh so we have found a great value in it and a great resource and community in it where we can support each other. Uh there is a rural caucus and this is the third proposal, so I encourage a vote yes and also encourage that we continue to engage with our communities on those priorities, uh regardless of uh the outcomes of this caucus.
Is there any further discussion? It has been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie to adopt resolution number two to amend Oregon School Boards Association's bylaws relating to composition of the Board of Directors. Chris?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. And our final resolution and vote tonight, resolution number three, which adopts the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws. So I believe this follows the past resolution. Sammy, did you have a comment or discussion?
Uh I cannot, I can't make a motion.
Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair, I move to adopt resolution number three, amend the Oregon School Boards Association twenty twenty-three bylaws.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Chris to adopt resolution number three to amend the Oregon School Boards Association twenty twenty-three bylaws. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would, Chair.
Sammy?
I would like to uh give a very general overview. Uh the bylaws include multiple changes, including uh shall the second resolution pass by the full membership uh to formalize the seat on the governing board and the Legislative Policy Committee uh from the Pride Caucus. As well, there are several substantial changes and some minor changes to the bylaws. Uh within the last year with a transition, OSBA uh reviewed the bylaws and looked into it in a comprehensive way and consulted with uh partners and the governance committee that uh I had the honor to chair this year and produced uh those uh uh changes that will ensure that OSBA bylaws uh reflect the needs of the organization today and for years to come and uh make it more robust and also address some minor uh changes that needed to be uh addressed in the past. So with that, uh I encourage a vote yes. And I really want to thank uh, I take this opportunity to thank uh the board for allowing uh me to volunteer my time with OSBA. These three resolutions reflect hundreds of hours of service from the staff and the board members who served on OSBA and being of support for their work. And seeing those three resolutions on the table of every uh school district in Oregon is truly, truly an honor. So thank you for voting on those three resolutions.
Thank you, Sammy. And thank you for the volunteer time that you put in at the state level and the national level to be able to bring this perspective back to the board here.
Thank you. It's my honor.
Any further discussion? Okay, it has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Chris to adopt resolution number three to amend the Oregon School Boards Association twenty twenty-three bylaws. Chris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving forward in our agenda to consolidated action. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action?
I would like to pull the appointments. Uh Budget Committee appointments.
Okay. Anything else? Anything online? Chris?
I have a question. I'm not sure exactly the process to do this, but on um J E C B B dash AR.
So that'll be under consolidated information?
Okay.
When we get to that, Chris, then.
Okay.
Hold on to that one and we'll bring that up then. Any others for consolidated action? Okay, Sammy, you pulled the Budget Committee appointment?
Yes, thank you. Uh just want to highlight and elevate the budget uh the appointment question and also uh ask uh to highlight about the additional vacancy. So I want to uh really acknowledge that Cassandra Reimman will bring a great wealth of experience and expertise and also storytelling that will help us uh communicate about the priorities and ask the questions that will help us communicate about the priorities relating to the budget. So I want to thank the for the recommendation and really supportive of the recommendation. And then I want to ask about the remaining vacancy. What's the timeline looks like uh to fill it? Or how many vacancies do we have remaining and what's the timeline and how can we be of support in recruitment?
So that fills the last vacancy.
Thank you. I apologize.
Yes, yes, we had the four appointments. Um and then this was the remaining vacancy and then we had two applicants for one spot. Um so we actually, for the first time in a while, had more applicants than we did spots, which is great.
So Lauren, maybe I want to ask you, sorry, on the spot. Uh what criteria would elevate recommendation of one uh uh the recommendation of a Budget Committee?
Well, that's actually a question that I had when we had more. Um so the reason why uh we elevated um Cassandra's was was based on her interest in in um the process through appointment um on your board. Um and in the future, I would like to have a scoring-like matrix that can be really clear um and make sure that we're also uh using our equity lens questions and a bunch of different tools that we um have in the district for making decisions. We, the understanding that I have um is that we used to have a finance committee on um which was made up of district staff as well as board and they were a part of making that decision um in the past.
Wonderful, thank you. Just talked about third question. When do we are, when are we required of filling uh one position at least from the Equity Committee? And does that fit with the timeline of the vacancies we're gonna have?
I'm not sure on that. I would have to look.
That that won't be till next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
So starting twenty twenty-sixth uh Budget Committee.
We have uh two one-year vacancy or two one-year terms, if I remember correctly, on the current committee. So we'll have two expiring actually just in June of twenty twenty-five, so.
Perfect, so we're good. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? Does anyone wish to make a motion related to consolidated action?
Chair, I move to approve consolidated action as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, I heard you, Lou. Thank you. It has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Lou to adopt the consolidated action items as submitted. I will now entertain final discussion. Is there any further discussion? And then we'll move to vote. Chris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on now to consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information? Chris?
Apologies for that.
Oh, no problem.
Um my question under J E C B B dash AR. Under safe public school choice transfers.
Okay, let's get a list of all the things folks want to have questions about and then we'll go through them. Any other items under consolidated information? Sammy?
I G B A G. Is that information or just, yeah?
In um the virtue, the charter numbers.
I G B A G.
I don't see that one, Sammy.
Special education procedural safeguards? Sorry. Okay. Sorry, okay, never mind.
Oh, I see. Anything under consolidated information? Lou, it sounded like your voice was coming through and we just missed you.
Oh, it was the, I might have been in, I might have been in the wrong section. It was the charter school one, just kidding. Oh, no, yeah, that isn't, that is in consolidated information, right?
Yes. Was there one that Lou just said she pulled in here? J E C B, okay, and I'd also like to pull the budget parameters. And the virtual, okay, virtual charter school enrollment. Okay, any others from the Board? Bernie, anything that you'd like to pull from the section that hasn't already been named? Okay.
Okay, Chris Hawkins.
Chris?
I think I, I hope I did this right. So this is the one that talks about student transfers and in a case where if a student, if a student feels unsafe with a specific student that may have caused harm, is this correct?
This is different because this is when O D E says the school has been deemed persistently dangerous. It's not if just an individual student was having difficulty with another individual student. I think that that's probably in our threat, our threat policy, I would imagine.
Okay.
Yeah.
But even in the wording in this policy, again, just like our other threat policy, it always enables the, it makes the victim move. Not the person that's made the offense. And I just, can we change that? The victim shouldn't be the one moving. And I just wonder if that's something we can change.
I could look through the policies and see what the recommendations are from OSBA. Because it's, you know, the policy's based on state law. So as long as we're not violating state law, that would be the case.
And then in some cases, that is the way it works, like in terms of Title IX and creating a safe environment for students, that does look the way you're proposing it. So there is variation based on different rules.
Okay, but not in every case, like not in this case, yeah.
I was just giving an example.
Yeah, that's work, yeah. I do appreciate that. I just like it in every case.
With current Title IX rules.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, any, anyone else with J E C B dash A R? Okay, Lou, we're gonna move to virtual charter school enrollment, oh, I'm sorry.
I had a comment on that one too.
Please do.
I just really wanted to appreciate what Chris said was all, because that actually comes up. And we hear about it as a Board, so I appreciate you looking into that, Melissa.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
In the charter school, I was just wondering how the, how the numbers looked from last year? Is that the one, no, that's the private schools in the district for the virtual charter schools from, compared to last year?
I don't have those in front of me, so I don't know, but I can get that together and kind of do a, kind of a longitudinal, if you want me to do that, oh, Ryan?
It's, I think it's pretty similar to what it's been in the past. The, the reason for this report is that you are typically gonna stay under three percent or a district can make a decision to cap those virtual charter school transfers under current law. And then we do know that private school numbers have gone down from last year. That's something else that we've tracked because we have to get numbers from them. And also keep in mind that those numbers of private school students don't necessarily reside in the district. They attend private schools that are in our district boundaries. So that's an important piece to consider, so as an example, Sandy and Christian has kids from a wide area. But that's in our account because that just, that school is in our district.
Thanks, Ryan, I was, yeah, it's, I was just wondering if that was still, if it was going down because of, I know that some people stayed in the virtual public from like COVID times. So that's why I was kind of wondering if it was starting to go down at all or if it was around the same, but, okay, that was all, thanks.
I, I quickly just pulled up January, yeah, I did. So I pulled up January from last year, Lou, just to take a look. And it looks like the numbers for virtual charter schools was 1.99%, so almost two percent in January of 2023. And now we're looking at 2.5%.
Okay, so it actually went up a tiny bit.
Yeah, just a tiny bit. But like Ryan was saying, the private school numbers that are listed here. Yeah, but, but we have other data, so, yeah. But we're just looking at the virtual charter, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I was.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Anybody else on that item before moving to the next? Okay, I asked to pull the budget parameters. So what was coming up for me when I read through this, I really appreciate the emphasis on student outcomes, student opportunity and student experience that I know in the last, in the last, or in, not the last, but the last budget decisions impacting this year now, a lot of the emphasis when hard decisions had to be made were on how do we minimize impact on students' experience? And I really appreciate that that's highlighted in this document as well as calling out data or decisions that are informed by data, decisions informed by what we know works, where, where we can put them, what we have to really get the best impact and outcomes for students. And something that I heard in the last round of budget decisions around process was some of the really thoughtful ways that educators and district leaders were coming together to think through what's needed versus what are the things that we, that are the nice to haves versus the must haves. I remember examples with especially around the science curriculum last year. That's one that stands out in my mind around having educators who are most involved really look at what does it mean to have a strong science education for students? What do we need in terms of, terms of curricula now versus later? What are the kinds of updates we need that we can't wait on versus what we can? And that educators' voices were really, just really honored, seemed to be honored in that process. And I don't see that aspect of the process reflected in the budget parameters. And so I just have a question of if it should be? Or if that's something to consider adding? And I'm thinking about it in terms of, you know, some of the, some of the areas where we're more likely to see that happen more systemically are around science education, math education, literacy education. Some of the areas where I think there's room for growth is, you know, last year there were some really hard cuts and hard cuts to the community around libraries and librarians and around music, arts, theater programs and so on. And I'm thinking about the ways that proactively educators can be involved in some of this systemic thinking around what is a really strong arts education or what does a really strong library program look like? So that those voices come into play in that strategic planning in a way that also allows for when we have to make cuts? What are the nice, nice to haves versus the needs to haves? So that was, that was something that just stood out to me in terms of a really important part of the process in moving forward into the next wave of, of budget discussions. Depending what, what we find out is coming down from the state in how are educators involved, not necessarily reactively later on, but proactively in lining out what really strong programs look like or as well as possible, given the resources that we have. And how those voices could be integrated more intentionally, systemically across programs. And open to thoughts from other Board members too in terms of either that or other aspects.
Well, this, we'll come back again because it comes back twice. So we'll take that information and an idea from you and we'll work to try to incorporate it. Yeah.
Any other comments on, on budget parameters from the Board?
I had one, Shauna. So thanks for pulling this one and I appreciate your comments shared as well. On the reexamining of patterns of spending, it has the district should develop and implement a program review and sunset process to identify and discontinue programs that are not achieving their objectives or that are simply not as effective as available alternatives. Is there a process already or are you, or is there a plan to present us with a process?
That was around critically reexam, Lou, I'm just restating, it's a little bit hard to hear sometimes. So we want to make sure that we captured your comment effectively. Just around if there's a process for critically reexamining patterns of, of spending that's noted in there? Was that what the question was?
Yeah, I was, I was rereading it and, yeah, sorry, my voice is not with me tonight.
No, that's okay.
But yeah, it was just that last sentence. I was wondering if there is a program review and sunset process already? Or is it saying that it's going to be developed and we're gonna learn about it?
What I would say that we are currently doing is we, this is the year, I would say of, this is my fourth year, I think, with the district. And we have been using data in every conversation and this is the first year that I have seen it to this extent. And so I would say we're doing this constantly. Whether or not we've developed a formal process, I don't think we're fully there. We have implemented some new strategies as far as looking at how many students are impacted by a decision, an investment? How many students could we impact? What are the, what are the data points that we are measuring? So I think we're starting to put those pieces into place so that we can do this. And I would say because we've implemented the scorecard process, we're actually making decisions a lot faster every six, eight, 12 weeks versus just doing this while we're doing the, the budget process. We're not, I mean, I think at this point, we're not really interested in spending money on something for a full 12 months when it's not working. So we're doing that just as part of our, our regular process. But we could work to formalize something more for the budget process and I've been thinking about that. One of the things is we have been trying to get some more student feedbacks. We've gone to a few different student leadership groups and talked to them about the budget process. Said they have a lot of ideas, as you may imagine, of things. And so we can take those ideas and then sort of quantify them by how many students they would serve or how much it would cost and kind of what the benefits and potential pitfalls of those decisions might be. And so I've already started to think through how maybe I could share some of those ideas and all of the different things that we consider and how we kind of rate with the data, the programs that we're currently running. Doing that for every single dollar that we're spending our money on next year might be a little tricky, but that's what we're working towards. And so you'll see that show up in the next budget presentation.
Okay, thank you. It just came up because it says like the recommendation in the parameters is that we should develop a process for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou, and thank you, Lauren. Any other comments or questions from the Board on budget parameters? Okay. Moving ahead, we are on to Board member comments. Any Board member comments in the evening with Chris?
I just want to go back to, and I apologize that I didn't say anything earlier when we were talking about Dr. White Bear's position that she was running. And I appreciate that Sammy spoke up, but I just also, I wouldn't sleep tonight if I didn't come back and say that I really do appreciate Dr. White Bear running for this office because I just think that, as Sammy said, she's such a strong advocate for our students and for our community. And I, I know that she does so much and I just appreciate that, that she's willing to, again, put herself out there and, and work for us and represent all of us. So I just wanted to appreciate her and not go unsaid.
Thank you, Chris. And I'll second that as well, these are volunteer positions and we have Board members, including Dr. White Bear, Sammy and everyone who serves, who give tremendous amounts of time and to continually offer to give more to the community for shared learning, for that ongoing support. Just very, very grateful to have such amazing and giving and generous colleagues. Lou?
Thanks, Chris and Shauna for those words and for yours earlier to Sammy. I wanted to share briefly because it would have been awkward for me to like ask to do public comment at our meeting because I'm not a member of the public, but I did go to the Boards. Nearly, nearly all of the Board meetings, there was a couple I couldn't go to that are voting on this position for our region, either virtually or in person. And shared with them some of my plans and I wanted to make sure that I told our own Board about that. Since it is something that I would, if I'm elected, would be able to be doing and that is to help bring our region together. I really believe that our voices are always stronger when they're brought together. And my thoughts are that we should be reached out to and, and ask what our needs are. And no Board should be left out in our region. We have such a diverse region as far as needs and geographies and just the whole way that the districts work across Lynn, Benton and Lincoln County. And being from one of the rural areas in our, in our region, or the coastal rural side and serving one of the districts in the Valley, I already have an interesting perspective of how things look. And I would just be really proud to represent our region and try to bring our collective voice together to the Board as decisions are made and asked that the impacts on the schools in our region are considered when those decisions are being made at the Board level and helping advocate with legislation as well for things anywhere from ranging to the, to the lack of funding for special education. I learned a lot going around and knowing that the state average is 15% and some Boards have, or some districts have 21%, 19%. Ours is 15% and only being funded at 11% for special education is really a big deal. And learning about other infrastructure issues just this last month has really made me appreciate the generosity of our local community. I already did, but it gives a deeper appreciation for that. And also a lot of empathy for districts that don't have the resources that we do. And I come from one of those districts when I was in K-12. And so I just wanted to take a moment and thanks for a little extra time to say that to you all because I think it's important that just because I'm from our Board that, that doesn't mean I shouldn't share those thoughts with you all as well. So you know what I have been talking about to other districts in our region and the E S D as well. And my, my biggest idea, not biggest, one of my ideas was to bring the Board Chairs and Vice Chairs together quarterly if they wanted to and were available to kind of discuss critical issues and things that we can be bringing to the OSBA Board. So if selected, that's one of my hopes, to be able to bring our Boards a little closer together and the work as well. So that was all, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Any other Board comments? So before we close, I know we have one more School Board meeting of this year, but it's not the same as, as the meeting tonight. So we won't have a chance to close out and wish the community a happy holidays. For those who celebrate, there are many different holidays coming up in the- So we won't have a chance to close out and wish the community a happy holidays. For those who celebrate, there are many different holidays coming up in the, in the coming month. As well as the new year ahead, but wishing everyone a very happy holidays and knowing that this is a time of year that can be very, very. Festive and joyful and fun and filled with care and support for some and for others, it can be a very, very challenging time and a time to. Sit with loss or grief as well as other challenges, especially with the weather changing. And knowing that many experience a little bit of all, so hoping that the community takes care. Sending everyone with positive wishes for the holidays and hoping that staff and admin as well. You give so much of yourselves all throughout the year continually. This is a job that never ends. Thank you for those of you who are here late at night with us, to the tech crew as well as staff, admin. And, and guests from the community as well, but hoping that you'll take time and actually rest and take care. This work is hard and it's meaningful. And it's challenging and it takes a lot. It takes all of you. And you need time to rest and restore too, to come back and be strong in the new year, so. Wishing everyone a restorative holidays, whatever that means to you, and very, very grateful to be doing this work together. So with no further business, this meeting is adjourned at nine fifteen P M. Thank you.